Like to call this regular meeting the rest of the city.
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Sure. I guess I'm here.
Mayor Sagata.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Here.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could y'all please join me in the flag?
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's because you called me Danielle.
Oh, did I call you Danielle? I was looking out here and saw Danielle. Sorry. Sorry, Des.
That's okay. I'm like, did you want to do it?
Maybe we ought to start over, huh? All right. First, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Thanks for joining us. Couple of announcements. One, a potential forum of the city commissioners may attend a virtual Zoom meeting with New Mexico Main Street for the annual accreditation assessment on October 14th, 2022, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. The virtual meeting discussion will focus on future goals, priorities, and needs of the organization, the community, and how New Mexico Main Street can assist with resource identification, technical assistance, and project implementation over the next 12 months. That's coming up on the 14th. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. This time, we will take items from citizens present on anything that is not related to the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time may do so. Okay, soon then we'll move on.
One question, the public notice for the quorum, where's that going to be held?
I believe there is going to set up something in here.
Mayor, Commissioner, that is a Zoom conference. I sent you a link here earlier today. All commissioners are welcome to come to City Hall and participate in it that way, but it is via Zoom video conference only.
Thank you.
All righty. Item 6A, deliberate act on approval of the September 27th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Have a chance to review them. Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
A motion, a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Call in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item B, report, Skill Sharp Workforce Development Training, Danielle Vanderpool, Coordinator.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to ask, is there a way to connect the computer to the big screen to be able to display it on there?
Well, we have to do a little prep work on that because it's kind of an obsolete system. So I think that we'd have, we'd have to, you know.
It takes a little bit of time. Okay. We had done it earlier. Okay. What I can do is share the PowerPoint with everyone. I sent it to Michael Ann today, so we will get it forwarded. Thank you. So I really thank you all for having us this evening. On behalf of the Center for Community Innovation, I have had the great opportunity of being an independent contractor under the Skill Sharp. And we're working with Metrics Learning. We have a really great brochure that has been developed. The Center for Community Innovation, Patricia Duran, Executive Director, did assist in making the brochure. And additional to that moving forward, we have shared with the workforce initiatives and many agencies within Rattone that there is free training to utilize. And currently, we are sharing the information more also with students. We have utilized Skill Sharp in the past with Health New Mexico interns, and they have gained some great skills, anywhere from effective listening to customer service to communication. And Skill Sharp currently has 65 users, 65 users that are for the workforce population. And we are linking to HSC with UNM Partner Hero. Working with UNM Partner Hero, there's a lot of collaborative ties where we're looking at how to further advance this and to further promote it. And linking to HSC means we're just linking it to all the resources available within our community and really trying to tie it in. So we are showing that there is an income and income distribution, education, employment, and health determinants that have been identified and utilizing the Skill Sharp. And that percentage rate right now is at 40%. We are in hopes and encourage the whole community to take advantage of Skill Sharp Metrics Training. And by doing that, they can improve their workforce by reskilling, upskilling, and also gaining new skills. And therefore, we're going to go ahead and move further to try to get more workforce and more agencies within the community utilizing it. I have also talked with Lynette Simpson with the schools. And we're looking at using it for health career pathways and other career pathways for students. And we do have 15 new students that have asked to sign up and to be able to utilize it. So our numbers will be up to 80 by the end of the month for users. Thank you. Also, one thing I would like to share that's on the slide, it's really important to know this, is that Metrics Learning is a WIOA platform. There are 6,000-plus courses in soft skills, Spanish, Chinese, 85% courses mobile compatibility, 900-plus connects that prove it assessments. The assessments are really great for a lot of different trainings. You can become certified. And so I really encourage youth that are still in Rattone that want to improve their skills for workforce initiatives to be able to be a part of this initiative. And just to give me an easy phone call, they can call my cellphone or they can email at Danielle@centerci.org. And on the center's page, we also shared a video that was developed to promote Skill Sharp last year. And we will be looking to upgrading that and making another great video in December of this year. And we are doing that at an affordable cost, $0 to the city and $0 to CCI. I have the great advantage of having a brother that does that kind of work up in Las Vegas, Nevada. And that's why it will be timeframe for December. But if anyone needs any assistance there, he's always willing to help as well. So our skill assessment and skill gap remediation of 130-plus industry certifications. It is a skill-up program, expands Metrics Learning access to community partners. There is a game-based learning mobile app. I feel that this is really nice to have and is accessible to youth. And it's kind of exciting for them to utilize it because it's just like playing a game. So therefore, they also get to train, and they can take the pre-test and then do the training, and then take the post-test, and then become certified. Is there any questions from the commission?
Sounds great.
It does. It sounds like you guys are doing a awesome job.
Thank you. Oh, wonderful. I'm glad you do have those slides. Yes, that is the same slideshow we were going to show. And then on the Facebook, Center CI page is the video that was made last December. And then we will be upgrading that this December.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
No, good job.
I was just going to ask, so you said if someone is interested in upskilling, they just need to get in touch with you. Do they have to do it through a particular business? Or could anyone in town do it?
Anyone in town can do it. And it's really simple. Once we connect, it's just mainly explaining the site to them and registering them as a user, giving them a username and a password, and giving them the licenses that they're interested in. And they can access all the trainings at the touch of their fingertips online in their home or any other area. Something that the Center for Community Innovation has supported is there is a computer laboratory available Monday through Friday with a scheduled time individuals can go in and access that laboratory to take the trainings as well.
Is there an age that you're looking at? I mean, can juniors and seniors in high school use it?
Yes, 16 up.
16 up.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
You're welcome.
Great report.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Item C, deliberate act on lodger's tax advisory board appointment. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do have an opening on our lodger's tax advisory board. And according to state statute, this would be a seat that would be filled by someone in a tourism-related role in the community. So we did appoint a lodger at the last meeting, and we had some consideration for this seat. And Sandra Young has consented to put in her application. We bring this to the commission and serve on our lodger's tax advisory board. Thank you, Sandra. And if you remember the introduction to Sandra, Sandra has recently relocated to the community. She is one of the principals of Moss Adventures. And those of you who had a chance to talk to someone at Moss Adventures about the plan, it's very exciting, outdoor recreation business that we really look forward to and have offered our support to. We're really fortunate that they are in Rattone. And you can see from the application that Sandra brings a full page of a lot of great relevant experience. And I think it would be a good idea if we really looked at marketing and promoting our outdoor recreation potential here in Rattone and in the region. We have so much to offer. And, you know, I think a lot of the folks that are driving by us from Texas to Colorado, that's what they're looking for. So I would really welcome Sandra's input and her expertise on the lodger's tax advisory board. So you have my recommendation for approval of this point.
All right. Anybody push that, Sandra?
Yeah, Ms. Young, I saw that video today I watched that was on Cruisin' about how they build the tents.
Oh, yes.
And it's about a 16-minute video, and it was really informative. It shows how they make the tents and how you got started and everything with Moss.
Sandra, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you have a couple of comments for the commission and the community. I don't want to put you on the spot, sorry. But I just did.
Well, first of all, thank you for the welcome to everybody. We've had some experiences in other towns and not felt this level of welcome. And that has incited me to actually show up to several of these meetings and to become involved in the community and to familiarize myself with what's going on. And I love the direction of the town. I'm a small-town girl that's lived in a city for a really long time and loving getting back to grassroots and hope to get a lot of those city folks that I've been familiar with to come out and visit places like Rattone and to use things like Moss Adventures. So I understand the attraction to a town like Rattone. Drove by it many, many times on my way elsewhere and said, looked at each side of the road and went, "What a shame because it's so pretty here." And now I find myself here and really, really hoping to get on board with the improvements and getting other folks to stop and stay. So I have done a lot of volunteering in other communities I've worked and lived in. So I'm going to be pretty comfortable with this and was very flattered that I got asked to join you all, so.
Well, we appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Appreciate your interest and your involvement.
Definitely.
And we look forward to Moss doing great things here.
Us too. We can't wait to get going.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I won't move to approve Sandra Young as to be appointed to the lodger's tax advisory board.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve Ms. Young as a member of the lodger's tax advisory board. Is there any further discussion? Call in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item D, deliberate act on bid award for green waste grinding professional service contract. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, what we're talking about when we're talking about green waste is generally tree limbs. And so, you know, we like it when property owners do the maintenance, and we wind up with a significant volume of tree limbs. In the past, we have processed those at the Armstrong Lane Transport Station. Currently, we are accepting tree limbs and yard waste and plan to do the processing at the East Hurford Avenue Transport Station. And so we have piles of tree limbs at both locations. We did have an accident with our tree grinder a couple of years ago, and that grinder really goes back to the 1980s. It had a lot of age on it. Very tough to replace that with a new piece of equipment. One option that we've looked at is using a contractor for this type of service. Our Public Works Director did ask for sealed bids for processing the yard waste pile, the green waste pile at both locations. And so we did get a bid from Rocky Top Resources. That was the only bid that was received by Rattone. They bid the amount of $53,250. That amount is excluding gross receipts tax. We think we can get everything processed and get caught up for another couple of years with that. And this would be paid for by solid waste enterprise funds or with our environmental increment. We have a balance to allow this in either fund. And so one of the things we've talked about doing for this two years now, and I think this is a good proposal for us, I'd recommend approval of this. And you have in your packet a recommendation for award from Michael Ann Antinucci as well.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Berry? I have one, I guess, on the mulch that's created. Are they going to take that or is that going to be available for community use or?
The mulch is available for community use. I would advise people they can have as much of that as they want. It'll be a coarse material. We do use it in our composting operation out at, it's still going on at the Armstrong Lane Facility, but yeah, people can have all they want.
Cool. I get asked that once in a while.
Yeah, it's, I mean, loading it is a bit of an issue. I don't know that we can, you know, load the backbeat truck with the material. But other than that, the material, if we can put it to a good use, we want to do that.
Cool. Any other comments, questions?
I did inquire at the cost of a new piece of equipment to replace it, and it was well, well, well above anything close to that. So this seems like a good contract. I will move to this. Bid award for the green waste grinding professional service contract.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract. Is there any further discussion? Call in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate act on memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattone and N E N N E F, doing business as the Center for Community Innovation for ExploreRattone.com and Media Management Services. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, previously, the commission had addressed an allocation of lodger's tax funding to the Center for the media, generally described as the media management task. And I believe that with the action of the commission to date, there is $40,000 allocated for this task. Now, referring back generally to our conversation with auditors, they had advised the city that they're tasked with really looking at all of our lease agreements. This is technically not a lease agreement, but we are going through all of our agreements and trying to update those if they need updated or get caught up on things. And we're not really sure what all is involved in their view of a review of a lease situation wouldn't involve this. But the point is that we are going through all of our agreements with community partners. And I think this is something that we're probably should have had back in our budget time. But I have drafted a memorandum of agreement that lays out the terms. And it's in line with the general understanding of what the center has proposed as the scope of work and the $40,000 that was allocated by the commission. So those are the general terms that you find in the agreement. The agreement would run from the last day of August. And just dawned on me that should probably be the first day of September of '22 until August of '23 a year. That's generally when we had begun supporting this effort and paying these invoices. So those are the general terms. There are some reports that would be due. Of course, when an auditor looks at something like this, they want to see a written report. So there would be some times when the center would come to the commission twice a year and update you on things that are going on. And the presentation that the center made previously was very informational, you know. So we've got that set up for a couple of times a year. Generally, they do attend and update lodger's tax advisory board. So that will be in there in addition to the written reports. Now, other than that, the terms are generally in line with agreements that we have in place with not-for-profits. No answer any questions, Mayor?
All right. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
Just one comment, Mayor. I thought maybe adding in the Google Drive as well, because I know Patricia spends a lot of time doing that.
It is on the scope of work.
Oh, it is on the scope of work.
So it says that it's available for use for any, the city and also any community partners that want to do commission. So it's all there.
Great, because I know that that's a big part of what she does. A lot of our assets are in there, and it's a great resource.
Yes, I think it's on scope of work on thunder activities.
I don't think we have scope of work, that's why.
Oh, okay. So then I can form this.
Do you want to go get a copy?
Yeah, I think that you need a, the scope of work is a four-page document submitted by the center. And the agreement states, "The center shall provide services described in detail in the center's statement of work as attached to this agreement." So we are incorporating that by reference. Michael Ann will be back for some copies. But that is integral to the agreement.
Good job. All right. Any other comments, questions? I do appreciate the report.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, that's very comprehensive.
There's a lot of going back to COVID and the trauma of that to remember what was happening. And then I had a baby during COVID too, so I was like, I have to remember what I did. And so I have to go through a lot of reports.
Well, I didn't see any baby food on the bill, so I don't know. Good. Good job. No, I appreciate it. Very, very nice. Any other comments, questions? We entertain a motion.
Shall I move?
A second. A motion is second to adopt the memorandum of understanding between the city of Rattone and the Center for Community Innovation for ExploreRattone.com and Media Management Services of N E N N E F. Is there further discussion? Desiree?
No, sorry.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate act on resolution 2022-52, budget adjustment number three fiscal year '23. And we sent Michael Ann off, so Mr. Berry, you can lean it for a little bit.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, you have Resolution 22-52. This is your acceptance of budget adjustment number three, which will subsequently be reported to New Mexico Department of Finance Administration. And then you have Exhibit A, the summary of the budget adjustment number three. Now, what would be a good idea right now, I think, is if I go get the copying chore done and I send Michael Ann back and answer your specific questions about the budget adjustment or the resolution.
I would suggest you do that.
Send her right in.
No second to that.
And in the meantime, cue the Jeopardy music. Well, it's pretty straightforward, the adjustments. For this one. $250,000?
Yeah.
Well, she's already.
She's already got it. She's good.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I went ahead and made copies of the statement of work for you for the last item that you took action on, on the agenda. So that should be attached to the MOA and will provide you further information, the detailed information on the actual scope of work. So we apologize for that. Moving to our budget adjustment, we are requesting approval this evening of budget adjustment number three. Under the general fund, we do have some line item adjustments. We just recently paid our premiums to the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund, so the budget was just kind of an estimate. And so these adjustments would be based on the actual premiums paid. We are requesting a $250,000 temporary transfer from the general fund to our Airport Hangar Project. That's a project that's starting to move along. You'll recall that we did receive an extension to extend that grant through May of 2023. So we will definitely close that one out before the end of the fiscal year. But we do need to have some additional funds just to cover us pending the grant reimbursements. Sometimes the turnaround can be a little bit slow or doesn't occur in the same month that we request the reimbursement. So these would just be temporary and would be transferred back to the general fund once the project is closed out. And then also, we do have some ongoing work at the Welcome Center. So hopefully, you've had a chance to see the improvements made to the outdoor sign. It's been refaced, and so it looks really nice. We do have some additional work that we need to do to stabilize the sign. And then just a few more building repairs, which, as you know, is kind of an ongoing thing with most of our buildings. And then also, purchase of a Conex building to be placed at the Train Depot. So that was not something that I had included in the budget. And then at a previous meeting, we did recently approve the contracts for the new DOT TPF funding for the Chipseal project. And so I've put that in the budget. I didn't include any matching funds because we are still waiting for the, I guess, notification if we qualify for the match waiver. So it's possible, depending on if we get that or not, if I have to come back with an additional budget adjustment. Other than that, in the sanitation fund, just line item adjustments. Once again, for the payment of the insurance and just reallocating the funds. Is there any questions?
Comments, questions?
Just wondering what the storage building is for at the depot. Is that for construction projects or?
Amtrak has brought in snow removal equipment and baggage handling equipment. So the Conex would store that onsite. They've also brought in a full-time ticket agent recently. That's something we haven't had for a number of years. And they've talked about adding additional staff. So we are really excited about, you know, the improvements from Amtrak and the local service. But this would house the equipment that they recently purchased and brought to Rattone. We've got that housed in the Public Works shop right now, but we need it onsite. And we're hopeful that we get a little snow this winter, so that would be good. And, you know, the critical thing about clearing snow off the platform is it's in that 50-foot area from the rail that requires special insurance that the city crew, you know, is really out of bounds for us. So Amtrak will gear it up to handle that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-52, budget adjustment number three fiscal year '23.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 22, 2022-52. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate act on resolution 2022-53, authorizing the certification of the city of Rattone's 2022 chapter asset inventory. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, we did put this item on the agenda this evening in anticipation of having the complete report to present to you this evening. You will see in the resolution that we did perform the annual inventory with Records Consultants, Inc., RCI, and they were here May 9th through the 13th. There's kind of two components to this report. They come and do the annual physical inventory. And then we're still in the process of completing the portion that would be LIB, which is land, infrastructure, and building improvements or buildings that were donated. So we're still really trying to fine-tune those numbers before we finalize the report. So that's kind of where I'm at. So I would just request that this item be postponed till the next meeting.
Sure. I'll move to postpone 2022-53. Second.
A motion and a second to postpone until our next meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, city manager report. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would report to you that the independent auditing firm had personnel onsite here most of last week performing field work. They are working their way They are working their way through the auditing financial report that's due December 15th to the state auditor. They'll be back in a couple of weeks for another session of field work, and so that is ongoing. I would just report to you on something Michael Ann had mentioned, that construction is advancing on the Hangar project at the airport. That's something we've talked about for a while. The floor and foundation construction is currently complete. That's concrete construction by the general contractor, Archileta Construction. Next, when we get some cure on the concrete, we'll start putting up the building. So project's making some progress here right now. We'd give an advisory to the residents of the area of West Colfax. Tentatively, we plan paving operations on West Colfax next week. That's the area of the street from Second Street going west to the railroad tracks. So it crosses State Street, and brilliant will be an interruption to traffic. There'll be some street closures. I don't have details on the day, so I will get something out to the community when we have a little better information on that. But we're trying to get that paid, but we still got the weather to do that. We did ask, we did put in a grant writing request to North Central Economic Development, and they have a grant writing contractor. We've worked with them and Black and Felicity at North Central on a couple of applications for federal funding. So one application is related to improvements at the Shooter Theater. We propose to upgrade plumbing consisting of water and sewer and electrical infrastructure in the building, so that's submitted. We don't expect that we would hear anything back on that till after the first of the year. Application's in. We are planning on submitting an additional grant application to the federal government, to U.S. Department of Transportation by Thursday, and this would be for the planning phase of the replacement of the East 10th Street Bridge. So that would go hand in hand with our proposed improvements to the front of the road and to East 10th Street. Currently, we don't have funding in place for any construction improvements on the bridge, but we would perform the planning first and then try to come back with construction funds. We did talk about the annual accreditation of Rattown Main Street, and, you know, as we talked about, that's October 14th, end of '11, and it is by Zoom video conference. So if anyone wants to attend that, they can just log right on, or you can get on here at City Hall. Staff will help you with that if you want to come down to City Hall. Jolene Green has asked me to talk about the open house that is scheduled at the Tourist Information Center located on the corner of South Second Street and U.S. Highway 6487. That is scheduled for Sunday, October 16th, between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00, 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The ambassadors will be there to do a ribbon cutting, and they will provide light snacks. So the public is invited. That's Sunday, October 16th, 3:00 to 5:00. Have one other item to report to the commission. Rattown Fire Department and Emergency Services has received a piece of equipment that we generally call the vending machine. This is something we've waited on for a long time. This is an apparatus that's important to us to help regulate inventory and manage controlled substances or class substances that we use in the ambulance service. So that's a big upgrade for us, and we'll have installation done within about 10 days on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Cool. Any questions for Mr. Berry? I got a couple. I got asked, one, I got asked, where are we at on the Rattown Monument sign? You know, signage coming into town, or are we at there?
Right. I think that we're, you know, in the conceptual stage on that, although I think there's a pretty good idea of where we're going on that. It is something that we want to complete, really, all of our signage projects during 2022, and we're getting pretty late in the year. But there's, you know, there's some funds left over from the T-Mobile grant, and there's a number of things that we want to accomplish. Certainly, the monument sign that would be located on Highway 6487. It's getting the location finalized. There's going to be a permit from the New Mexico Department of Transportation and finalizing the design. So there is some work going on, on the design part of that, and that's the goal, to get that monument sign in. There is more wayfinding signage also on the drafting board. We had a good contractor provide the wayfinding signage before. We've got a lot of compliments on that. I think there's a proposal to extend that to the Clayton Highway to 6487, try to provide wayfinding to people coming in town that way. And so we've got a proposal that's very close, Mayor, on that. And then I think there's a couple of miscellaneous additional pieces of signage. If you remember, a couple of years back, Frank Ferry came to the commission, and he asked the commission to designate the multimodal facility as Heritage Park, and we want to commemorate that with signage, too. So that would be one of the additional signs that is, that's on the list, all things that we're working on. They were down the list a couple of slots, but they're working their way up very quickly.
Cool. The other thing was just an observation I made coming home from Airport in Springs a couple of weeks ago. As you're coming into town and going south and that, and, you know, the 72 exit, there is no sign on that southbound side that says Sugaree Canyon State Park Exit here. Can we talk with DOT about possibly something there? And I know the one going north used to be in really bad shape. I don't even know if it, since I haven't noticed, I bet it's still in bad shape.
It's in bad shape, and we did talk to DOT about that, and they said, yeah, no, that's on our list to do, and I don't know how seriously to take that. And there's two ways we can address that. So one is a DOT sign. That's the big brown, large brown-colored sign that they tell us that they are modernizing those, and they will do that. But I haven't seen any movement on that. And the other is a billboard. And I think both in southbound before you get to 72 and northbound before you get to 72, you know, there's some billboards that have something on that now, but, you know, I think that the city should be pursuing that. We don't have to deal with DOT then. We can just deal with the billboard company, and of course, they do have a couple of clients right now. But I think there are a couple of good billboard locations that we could get on and mark at Sugaree Canyon State Park.
Cool. All right. That is a good job.
All right. Kenny, any other comments? Mr. Chatterley? Mr. Jacomo?
None here.
Mr. Chatterley? Mayor Pro Ten?
Good.
I guess we're all good. So nothing else going on, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right.